Lance, if you can read the Open Public Meeting Act statement.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board Secretary has forwarded notice of this meeting for advertising by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Seacaucus Town Hall on the bulletin board of the Education Administration Building, as well as notice being provided to the Bergen Record Jersey Journal and District Website.
Thank you. Flag salute? Roll call.
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Mr. Bolonino?
Present.
Ms. DiDetta?
Present.
Mr. Barry?
Present.
Mr. Diombre?
Present.
Ms. Geller?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Absent.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Lyons?
Present.
Executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 21st, 2024.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolonino?
Yes.
Ms. DiDetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Abstain.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Abstain.
Student representative report.
Hi, uh, sorry. But, um, to start off, I'd like to congratulate our esports team who won second place of the Atlantic Region for the EGF Gaming League. Next up, on January 8th, NJIT held a Science Olympiad where 20 sophomores, juniors, and seniors from our school competed with other top-performing students all over the state, and we performed very well there. Also, the same day, we had an Alumni Day slash Harvard Representative, um, sort of day. So, the seniors, we had the privilege of meeting a lot of, um, Seacaucus High School alumni who go to schools like Princeton and Purdue, and there they really, um, just told us about how they got acclimated to that college life, and they gave us some very, very good advice, and it was really nice seeing some old friends over there. I said hi, and it was really cool. Um, and also, the juniors, they talked to a, um, Harvard representative. Uh, the Harvard representative gave them some guidance on the application process, which they will be starting in a few months. As, uh, the second marking period comes to a close, we're gonna have midterms next week, um, from Tuesday to Friday. And finally, on January 30th, the National Honor Societies will have their induction ceremony. Um, these inductees have worked very hard to receive their honor, and it would be a great night to appreciate their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Correspondence?
No correspondence.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Fogarty, who will be doing our ethics review training this evening.
Chris, am I up here?
Yes.
So, good evening. Um, as, uh, Mrs. DiDetta said, this is the annual ethics training that, uh, board members are required to participate in. I'm gonna be speaking to you tonight about what your role and function is as, uh, board members, and what the role and function of the board is, and the interplay between individual board members and the Board of Education. And, uh, I want to begin by saying that the acting superintendent said something to me, uh, earlier tonight, which probably, uh, uh, oh, is overarching with regard to, uh, the Code of Ethics for school board members, as well as all your policies. And that is that, uh, really, it's about treating each other with respect and civility. Uh, understanding what our respective roles are, and respecting, uh, each other's roles as we go about the governance of the Seacaucus Board of Education. So, I certainly want to take credit for that. I'll give him, uh, uh, credit for saying that to me, albeit in a different context. So, I want to begin by, by talking about, um, what the Board of Education is, what our authority is, how it's derived. Um, we are a statutory creature. Um, we have the authority under Title 18A, uh, which is the, uh, the statute, the legislation, uh, that establishes what our powers and duties are. Uh, we, uh, enforce the rules of the State Board of Education. We make amend and repeal rules for government and management of our schools, and we perform all those things that are necessary in order to provide a thorough and efficient education for our students, uh, and, uh, provide them with the equipment and maintenance of buildings that are necessary, uh, to carry out those functions. So, the State Board's rules require that the board do a number of critical things. We approve the curriculum that meets the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Uh, we adopt a budget that provides for a thorough and efficient education. We hire the necessary certified personnel to educate the district students, and we develop policies for the management of the school district. Importantly, none of this happens without the recommendation of our superintendent of schools. No action can be taken by the board with regard to any of these critical areas without the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The only exception to this is with regard to the renewal or non-renewal of our certificated staff members. On May 15th of every year, the superintendent makes a decision as to whether non-tenured employees will be renewed for a subsequent school year. If he makes a decision that they will not be renewed, they have the ability to come before the board to challenge that decision and to persuade you that the superintendent's decision is incorrect. That is the one and only time that the board can trump the recommendation of the superintendent, and arguably could hire an individual that was not recommended by the superintendent for reemployment. However, that does not allow the board, under any circumstances, uh, to do a leapfrog over the superintendent, uh, decide to come forward with a recommendation to the board that has not gone through the vetting and recommendation process required by the superintendent. Boards can only take official action at a public meeting. The board functions only when it is in session, and a quorum. A quorum of the board is a majority of our board, requires five board members to be present, and that is required in order for us to convene a meeting. Our meetings are governed by the Open Public Meetings Act, uh, civil rights statute, uh, implemented by the legislature. Jurisdiction for violations falls not to the Commissioner of Education, interestingly enough, but actually falls to our county prosecutor. So, that should, uh, hopefully impress upon you just how important it is that we comply, comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. Committee meetings, less than a quorum, are not official action, so our committee meetings are not advertised. There's no obligation to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. Um, those committee meetings, uh, do not operate with a quorum of the board, uh, so they, uh, provide an exception, uh, to the meetings law. You want to be careful with emails and text messages. And why? Because even though those text messages and emails are being sent by you singularly, not part of a quorum, if in fact you are sending emails or text messages to one another in real time, and there are five or more of you who are corresponding with one another, arguably, that would be a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. You would be conducting board business, uh, uh, outside of a, uh, of a, of a public meeting, uh, and if it is in real time, uh, that would fall within the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. The board operates as one unit, not as individual members. We share our opinions. We can have a robust discussion at a public board meeting, but once the board makes a decision, a single course of action by majority vote, it is to be respected by the remaining members of the board, regardless of whether you may have been dissenting members of the board on that particular action. In open meetings, to preserve the decorum and ensure that the board expresses a single, consistent position, the president alone speaks on the board's behalf. She may certainly request that other board members continue to that, contribute to that discussion. Uh, often that happens in terms of reporting out from, uh, the work of our committees. Uh, she may also defer to you if you want to contribute to a conversation at a public board meeting, but it is the board president, uh, that is delegated with the responsibility under our policies, uh, to speak on the board's behalf. The board and the administration. The board's direct responsibilities are to make policies, develop plans, evaluate outcomes, not to manage the day-to-day operations of the school district. Pretty simple. Uh, we are a policymaking body. We should not be involving ourselves in the day-to-day activities that fall to the superintendent and to the other administrators to whom the superintendent delegates those responsibilities to. Members are responsible not to administer the schools, to see that they are well-run. We have a board policy that says, and this is really important because this is a provision in the School Ethics Act, it is a provision in our policy that is most often violated by board members. You see so many, you see so many complaints going to the School Ethics Commission where this happens, and that is that no board member by virtue of his or her office can exercise any administrative responsibility with respect to the schools, or, as an individual, command the services of any school employee. In simple terms, what that means is that a board member cannot call up the superintendent and direct him to do anything, cannot call up the business administrator and direct her to do anything, cannot call one of our building principals and direct them to do something, or to produce something, or to prepare a report. There is no authority to do any of those things, and to do so would clearly transgress both the, both the statute and the board's policies. Board members do not have all access to the district schools, and in many respects, our, your authority is no greater than a parent or a community member. You're expected to observe the visitors' policy when you come into our schools. You sign in and you sign out. We all do that. We do that for security reasons, but we also do that to ensure that we are not using our positions to, uh, for some unwarranted, to take some unwarranted advantage. Um, and board poli, the, uh, board, the board's policy explains that board members visiting the schools for any reason must observe direct regulations, uh, for all school visitors. So, the board obviously is delegating responsibility, uh, to, uh, to, to administer the schools, uh, to the superintendent of schools. He delegates that, uh, responsibility to his directors and his supervisors, and of course, our business administrator has the keys to the kingdom with regard to finances. She is responsibility for overseeing business, maintenance, the budget, uh, fiscal planning, and she serves as a general accountant and also as our certified registered purchasing agent. So, as I started out, I want to emphasize that the relationship between the board and the administration is expected to be cooperative, not adversarial. You should share your concerns with the administration in advance of meetings. It assures an effective public response. So, if you get the agenda, if you have questions, if there is, uh, if, if the backup material, uh, isn't sufficient for you to make an informed decision, you want to communicate that, uh, to the administration before the meeting, uh, ask for that information to be provided to you. That makes, that, that accomplishes two things. One, it makes sure that the administration is able to be responsive to you, but more importantly, it makes sure that you are able to make an informed decision about whatever that agenda item is that you're expected to vote on at a particular board meeting. So, you should be mindful of which matters are appropriate for public discussion versus, uh, versus those that are reserved for private executive consultation. Um, as required by the Code of Ethics, a board member confronted with a community complaint should withhold comment on that and refer it to the superintendent, and that would be any community complaint. Obviously, you want to be gracious about the person who is approaching you. You know, whether they're approaching you on the soccer field, or at the grocery store, or on the streets of Seacaucus, and they've got a complaint, you have to refer that complaint to the superintendent. Even at a board meeting such as this, if there is a hot-button issue in Seacaucus, and they're ready to storm the Bastille, and the, the citizenry is coming up to this podium, one person after another, no matter how compelling that may be, the board does not have the ability to, to, to take action, to resolve that complaint at a public meeting without referring it to the, uh, to the acting superintendent for a resolution. It is only if there is not an administrative solution, a failure of an administrative solution, that the board can take up that action at a public board meeting. So, the Code of Ethics requires, uh, our board members to support district staff, including the administration, support them, protect the personnel and the proper performance of their duties. Uh, if there are questions about, uh, board members, uh, about, uh, if there are questions that board members have, uh, about the administrative staff, they should be Rice Notice. That discussion should take place in executive session. Uh, we should not be criticizing, uh, our personnel, uh, in public, in the public square, on social media. Uh, that would be a violation of the Code of Ethics. A violation of this, uh, of this command would occur if there's evidence that a board member took deliberate action, which resulted in undermining, opposing, compromising, or harming school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. Um, if there's a concern about, uh, the performance of, of an employee in our school district, that concern should be communicated to the superintendent. Superintendent alone can Rice Notice an employee for a discussion, uh, for discussion in an executive session. With regard to public meetings, it certainly doesn't mean that board members cannot disagree with a recommendation made by the superintendent. You have every right and even a responsibility to do that, to have a robust discussion, but you want to do it here, and you want to do it here because if you do it here, you are privileged to have that conversation. You do that with impunity. You don't run the risk that you are going to violate a provision of the School Ethics Act. You also don't run the risk that there may be an issue with regard to the invade, to, to a violation of someone's privacy rights. Criticizing the superintendent can lead to a violation of the Code of Ethics, where it undermines or compromises the superintendent's ability to do his or her job. Where would that happen? That would happen if you decided that you wanted to speak to your principals and say, gee, you know, I'd like to know, uh, how Mr. Voorhees is doing. And if you were to solicit that kind of response from your principals, arguably, you would be violating this provision of the School Ethics Act. So, the powers of the board, the authority of a board member are not coextensive. What does that mean in simple terms? What it means is that the board acts as a single body or a single unit. So, no board member by virtue of your office can exercise any administrative responsibility with, with regard to the schools, or an, or an individual command, or as an individual, command the services of any school district employee, but the board could actually do that. So, if in fact you wanted to raise an issue that you were concerned about, you would do it here. If there was something that you wanted the, uh, the acting superintendent to prepare for you, or the business administrator to prepare for you, you would, you would do it here. You would see if there's a majority of the board that agrees that they want the administration to devote the time and resources to that particular effort, whether that particular effort would actually benefit the board as a whole, and the, and, and, and the school district as a whole, and then the board would make a decision about that. So, again, it would be the board that would have to exercise its authority based on your request that it consider doing so. Confidentiality. One of the most important things that I can speak, that I want to speak to you about tonight and impress upon you is the need for confidentiality with regard to what, to, with regard to discussion that may take place in executive session. In our executive sessions, you are going to be hearing about things, not only in terms of litigation and negotiations, but you're gonna be hearing about things that are highly sensitive. You're gonna be hearing about our, uh, our, our employees. You're gonna be hearing about our students. You're gonna be hearing about things, uh, that, uh, clearly, uh, are, 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 are private and sensitive, and the need for confidentiality with regard to those, uh, with regard to those discussions, um, cannot be emphasized enough. A violation of that is not only a violation of the School Ethics Act, it runs the risk that you could prejudice the board. Uh, student matters are governed by the Family Education Rights Privacy Act, FERPA. That federal law protects, uh, students. It protects their records. It protects any personally identifiable information. Personnel matters are governed by the Personnel matters are governed by the Open Public Meetings Act in terms of rice-noticing employees in order to protect their privacy rights. And of course, negotiations, the need for confidentiality has to be emphasized as well because disclosing that information could also prejudice the Board. I also want to say that with regard to confidentiality, when it comes to students, when it comes to personnel, you want to be particularly mindful of this because if there is a violation of that, you run the risk as an individual Board member that you may not be indemnified for those acts by the Board and under our, under our general liability and errors and omissions policies because you would have been acting inconsistent with your elected responsibilities as a Board member. So again, what happens in executive session should not be repeated to any third party, should not be discussed with anyone other than the Board, your, your colleagues on the Board, your Administration if it's appropriate, and of course, with myself. Code of Ethics. So, Code of Ethics for school Board members limits the role of Board members. It sets clear standards for the Board of Education to follow. And there are two important aspects of, of, of the Code of Ethics. One deals with prohibited acts. The other essentially deals with your conduct and your relationship with the Administration. There's an important distinction here because if in fact, there's been a claim that you have violated the, the School Ethics Act, that you have tried to use your position to gain an unwarranted advantage for yourself or friends or relatives, if you have done something in order to gain a financial benefit, that is prosecuted by the Attorney General's Office. They are the attorneys for the School Ethics Commission. That is their attorney. They would prosecute that complaint. Whereas if someone makes a complaint because you have violated the School Ethics Act with regard to your conduct, or your behavior toward the Administration, or with regard to any of the, with regard to any of the responsibilities that you have as an individual Board member, somebody makes that complaint, that individual is responsibility, is responsible for prosecuting that complaint, not the Attorney General's Office. Keep in mind that as long as, as, as long as your conduct, regardless of whether or not, whether, whether, whether or not is the subject of a complaint, if your conduct happens here, if your, if your conduct happens as, as, at a public board meeting, if you're acting within the course and scope of your official duties as a Board member, you're going to be indemnified and held harmless if such a complaint is filed. It's covered by Title 18A in terms of your official duties. And of course, we, as a Board, you as a Board purchase insurance in order to, which, which also covers acts and omissions where you may be accused of a violation of the School Ethics Act. But private action, on the other hand, is not covered. So if you're out there doing something on your own, not part of a, doesn't, doesn't occur at a public board meeting, you take some action on social media, you get involved in some activity that could compromise the Board. What would be an example of that? You know, let's say that you decide to become part of an advocacy group, you're soliciting parents in Secaucus as part of your representation, that clearly would be in conflict with your duties as a Board member. That would be private action outside the performance of your duties, arguably would not be identified by the Board or by its insurance policies. Also, keep in mind, anybody can file a complaint. So, except for the Board of Education. So if you're alleged to have done something wrong, that complaint could be filed by a teacher, an employee, it could be filed by the SEA, or it could be filed by a private citizen. But we as a Board cannot file a complaint against one of our own members. We are not permitted to do that. And if that were to happen, you would have to take a step back and you'd have to file that complaint as a private citizen. Secaucus Board of Education cannot take action against one of its own Board members. So this is the Code of Ethics. I'm not going to go through all of this because I've really highlighted those areas that I think are the most critical. But this is the Code of Ethics that sets forth very specifically each of your responsibilities and your decision-making. And again, I've highlighted those that I think are the most important for you already. So the limitations imposed by the Code of Ethics are clearly seen in your limited involvement in personnel decisions. Your role in hiring is to vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available, available after consideration of the Superintendent's recommendation. You cannot withhold your approval for arbitrary or capricious reasons, but you certainly can withhold your approval because you don't agree, as long as the reasons that you don't agree are legitimate reasons. And that can be for any number of reasons when recommendations come to you. You know, a recommendation comes to you, keep in mind that if it's a personnel recommendation, if there's an action pending before the Board, you know, you have the ability to look at the qualifications of that individual. You have the ability to go into the, go into the Superintendent's office during regular business hours to review a personnel file if someone's being recommended for a promotion, or someone is being recommended for disciplinary action. You have the ability to do that. But you don't have the ability to withhold your approval for arbitrary or capricious reasons. You do have the ability to say to the Superintendent, you know, we don't agree with your choice, we don't agree with your recommendation, we want you to go back to the well. You just don't have the ability, as I said, to essentially leapfrog over him and, and decide that you're going to recommend somebody else for that position. The School Ethics Commission has said that the best practice is that we limit our involvement to hiring the Superintendent, that after considering the Superintendent's recommendations, that we don't get involved in the interview process. You know, you do obviously get involved in the interview process for the hiring of a Superintendent, your school business administrator, maybe your assistant business administrator, maybe even a principal, but beyond that, the School Ethics Commission has said that you should not be involved in that interview process. And if you are involved in the, in the interview process beneath those, beneath, beneath the Superintendent and the Business Administrator in terms of the hiring, you need to have the Superintendent's concurrence, and your involvement is as a spectator. So you're not allowed to be interactive as part of that hiring process, but you're entitled, but you are entitled to watch that hiring process unfold. You're simply not, you're not permitted to ask questions, or even to pass questions to the Superintendent or to the Hiring Committee. So violations under the Code of Ethics. There are certain actions that have been identified in our, our administrative code that are considered to be violations of the Code of Ethics. So giving a direct order to school personnel, or becoming directly involved in the activities or functions that are the responsibility of school personnel. So kind of breaking that down to something that has real meaning for us, let's say that you walk out of, you walk out of this PAC center tonight, and you walk into the reception area outside, and you see garbage and debris all over the floor, and you're upset about what you see, and there's a custodian within eyesight. You don't have the ability to direct that custodian to clean that floor. You need to refer that complaint to the Superintendent. You go into one of the schools and you see somebody acting out inappropriately. You don't have the ability to address it. You have to direct that to, you have to direct that to the building principal, or to, or, or to the Superintendent. Let's say that there's some board action involving employment of an individual, and you're in one of the schools for a proper purpose. You don't have the ability to stop by at the principal's office, or the ability to stop by with the supervisor and say, gee, I see that Stephen Fogarty's name is on the agenda for an appointment. You know, what are his qualifications? Why are you recommending him? Clearly, that would be a violation of this provision of the School Ethics Act. You can't take deliberate action, which results in, as I said, undermining, compromising, or harming school personnel. And again, you cannot act on any complaint without referring it to the Superintendent. So in addition to adjudicating complaints that come before the School Ethics Commission, they also issue advisory opinions. So for example, if there is something that you want to do, or if you're a member of an organization, or if you are employed in a private capacity, and you are concerned about whether or not any of your activities might conflict with your responsibilities as a Board member, or a committee that you want to serve on, or some action that you may want to take, you can request an advisory opinion from the School Ethics Commission. And they're good about this. You know, if you submit the request by the 10th day of the month, you're generally going to get an advisory opinion by the following, by the following month. And it is advisory only. I mean, if a complaint is filed and it's adjudicated, I think you can take some comfort in knowing, some security in knowing that that is going to be the outcome, but again, it is advisory. And from time to time, we have done this on behalf of Board members. Generally speaking, if you think you have a conflict, then you would go to the Board President. The Board President would solicit an opinion from me. If I was clear and unequivocal in terms of my opinion, you can rely upon it. If I was uncertain, if I said I couldn't find any case law to really resolve the issue, I would suggest to the Board President that I request an advisory opinion on your behalf so that we keep you obviously in a safe harbor with regard to your conduct. So you can see, these are advisory opinions, and very quickly, Board member, can a Board member participate in negotiation if he or she has an aunt employed in the district but is not a member of the local union? This Board member wanted to know whether or not he or she could participate in negotiations. And the Commission issued an advisory opinion and said, no, you can't do that. You know, basically, Board members cannot participate in any aspect of negotiations, including voting on the collective negotiations agreement involving, following it, the attainment of a memorandum of agreement, if they have a relative employed in the same school district. So basically, you see the School Ethics Commission reaffirming what they have said many times. So here's a Board member who's an adjunct professor. And as an adjunct professor, the Board member says, are there any restrictions on how I conduct myself on the Board of Education? And the, the, the School Ethics Commission says, yeah, there are. You have to recuse yourself from any discussions or decisions which could relate to or otherwise involve any district personnel, not only who were your students, but any district personnel who were part of that program in that college. So let's say that, you know, you're an adjunct professor, and it, it, it is part, it is part of, of a doctoral co-op in, in, in one of the, the colleges or universities. Any employee, any employee matter involving those personnel that came before the Board, you would have to recuse yourself. Another advisory opinion in terms of interviewing personnel, again, as I've already emphasized for you, that you cannot conduct the interviews, you can only be spectators. Superintendent has got to agree that you should participate in that, and you know what, it's just not advisable. The one thing that I'm absolutely certain about, after hanging out with you for a number of years, is that none of you want to simply be spectators at an interview. So my suggestion is that you restrain from doing this entirely. Restraining yourself from doing it means that you're not going to get yourself into any difficulty. You can see this advisory opinion. There are a number of Board members who were concerned about the staff turnover in the school district. They were concerned about the fact that they were having a retention problem with their teachers. And so they wanted to conduct exit interviews with the teachers that were leaving the district to find out what the problem was. So laudatory purpose, well-meaning, School Ethics Commission said, not your job. That is a responsibility of the Superintendent, not you. He or she should conduct the exit interviews and report back to you as to what the problem is. And once you know what the problem is, then you have the ability to fix it. You simply don't have the ability to investigate it to determine what caused it. So you can see that this is actually an adjudicated case, and this goes to the issue of what you need to do if you are going to make representations about school, about school business, and what you need to do in terms of self-identification. So you can see that this Board member in Lacey Township, she got herself into trouble. She violated the School Ethics Act when she endorsed new members to the Board in her official capacity as a Board member. Basically said, I'm a member of the Lacey Township Board of Education, and I want you to vote for Gerald Lyons and Kelly Diadetta. She did not say that she was not speaking on behalf of the Board, and she left the impression with the public that the Board of Education had endorsed those candidates. She was censured as a result of that by the School Ethics Commission. You can see in the next case, coming out of Manchester Township, the Board member violated the School Ethics Act when he was a volunteer football coach after he was appointed to fill a Board vacancy. And so why is that? You cannot be a volunteer football coach when you are a Board member because doing so means that you are being involved in the day-to-day operations of the school. You are supervising student athletes, you are potentially supervising other individuals, perhaps even staff members. And basically, basically, they spared the rod here because he didn't know that he couldn't do this, and it was only for a two-month period. So they found a violation, but they did not impose a penalty. In this case, Woodbine Board of Education, the Board member violated the School Ethics Act when she picked up a letter from the home of a friend, school employee, regarding the employee's disciplinary discussion. So she had this friend, she said, and, and she said to the Board member, gee, you know, I'm going to issue a rebuttal to a disciplinary, disciplinary action that was taken against me. Would you mind giving that letter to the Business Administrator? And ask the Business Administrator to make copies for the Board members, but whatever you do, don't tell the Superintendent. So you can see that this checks off all the boxes. You know, this is a Board member who has taken action that undermines the Superintendent, perhaps even vilifies the Superintendent, also has taken action which could prejudice the Board. So here, as a result of the violation, the Board member was suspended from the Board of Education for 60 days. And by the way, these are all 2024 decisions. It was a hot year for the School Ethics Commission. In the next case, Manchurian Township Board of Education, the Board member was in violation of the Act when he called the complainant supervisor, represented himself as a member of the Board, and complained about the actions that the individual took at their board meeting. So imagine that I am a teacher, or an administrator in Union City, and I live here in Secaucus, and I come out here at every board meeting, and I'm railing against the Board and your policies, and you decide to call the Superintendent in my school district as a member of the Board and say, you know what, you really need to put a gag order out on that individual because he has treated us disrespectfully and with a lack of civility. That was found to be a violation. That Board member was censured as a result. That Board member took private action, the potential of which could have compromised the Board. And why? Because that individual could have sued the Board of Education for a violation potentially of their First Amendment rights. That action taken by a Board, by the Board member was found to potentially have a chilling effect on the individual's ability to come out and express an opinion at a public board So in the next case, this Board member used her position to further her personal agenda regarding her child's disciplinary record. So as Board members, when you have children in the district, you need to be particularly careful that, about this. I mean, while you're always Board members, you're also always, you're also always parents. You have the right to advocate for your children unquestionably. And while you're advocating for your children, you need to make sure that you're doing that as a parent, and that you are not representing in any way that you are a Board member, even leaving the impression that, that kind of, that, that kind of coercion is any part of that communication. In the next case, East Orange Board of Edu, East Orange Board of Education, this was a Board member who voted against a Board policy with regard to the naming of schools. This is a policy that we have here in the district. It's one that we have looked at on various occasions, but in this policy, the Board wanted to impose a restriction so that only individuals who are deceased could, could, could have their names proposed for naming on a school building. This Board member voted against it, and instead voted to rename the school building in honor of the Lieutenant Governor for whom she served as Chief of Staff. Ultimately, that was found to be a violation. She was censured for her actions, using her position for special interests or political, or partisan political purposes, and also for personal gain or for the gain of friends. So you can see that three or four of those boxes are checked off in terms of the School Ethics Act. So, as I started, generally use good judgment. You want to be really careful about social media. I say time and again to Board members, don't use social media. Time and again, I am completely ignored when I give that admonition. So I will tell you that since I am ignored, what I do want to tell you is you need to be careful about it. You need to make sure that you're not posting anything that violates any district policy. You want to make sure that nothing in those postings are defamatory, nothing in those postings is confidential, that it's, that it's not something that you've learned about as a Board member, that the general public doesn't know about. You want to make sure that you're not using your title or position to solicit for, for anything, even if it serves a laudatory purpose. You want to refrain from having communication through social networks with other Board members because that too could be a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. You don't want to respond to any postings regarding Board of Education or school district business. And I would go so far to say, is you don't even want to respond to something on social media that might be critical of the Board, critical of a teacher, critical of the Superintendent, by using an emoji or a thumbs up, because all of that can be interpreted as a communication by a Board member with regard to a complaint that should be referred to the Superintendent and upon which you should not act. So don't post any information on, on a social network. That would be a violation of the School Ethics Act. And if you are going to post anything on social media, if you're going to write a letter to the editor, if you're going to, if, if you, if you are, are going to hold court in Secaucus and express your opinions about anything, if you're going to do a podcast, you want to make sure that you make it clear that you are speaking as a private citizen, that you are not speaking- that you are not speaking in your capacity as a board member. And you can see the disclaimer right there in quotations. And what I want to emphasize is that the School Ethics Commission has said that this is unconditional and unequivocal. You can't go halfway, you must go all the way and use that statement. So if you have a website, if you're on social media, you want to make sure that you are indeed posting that statement. And if you had a campaign website, it is no longer prudent for you to use that website on social media. You should discontinue the use of that website. So there's something relatively new. Instead of abstentions, we now talk about recusals. You know, we always talked about when you vote, you vote to, you, you vote to approve, you vote to deny, or you could abstain. But if you have a conflict, you should recuse yourself. Recusing yourself means that you are taking, that you have a conflict and that you are not participating in the discussion or in the vote because of that conflict. It is a recusal. It is if you are not even here. Now, I have given you here for anybody that is employed in another school district, I have given you a chart so that you can readily determine whether or not you have a conflict and the extent to which that conflict may involve your ability to, to participate in negotiations or to participate in any issues involving the superintendent or any supervisor of a relative of yours who's employed in Secaucus. So you can quickly go through that in terms of your own status, in terms of the status of your spouse or your partner, your dependent child, your non-dependent child or relative, and you can see what those restrictions and/or limitations are and are not. So I know for example, that we have a board member now who is a, a member of a similar union, is not a member of the SEA, but is a member of a similar union, so works in another school district. We have several board members that work in other school districts. And so can they participate in negotiations? No, they cannot. So they cannot be involved in the development of proposals or strategy or any of those issues. Can they vote to ratify the contract? The answer is yes. And can they participate in the superintendent's issues? The answer is also yes. What's the asterisk for? Well, the asterisk is that the answer may not be yes if you are a union leader in another school district, if you are the grievance chairperson in another school district, then you may be further restricted in terms of what you can do. Indemnification, I want to emphasize this. Indemnification is available to all of you, provided that what you do, you do in the course and scope of your elected public duties. This is a case in which a board member was, in, in which a board member filed a lawsuit against the Board of Education on which she was serving. Ultimately, the board said that you cannot sue us and also serve as a member of the board. They therefore filed a petition to have her removed from the board. Ultimately, she was not successful. She wanted to recover her attorney's fees and that was denied. And in this last case, this is a, a board member that was advocating for her child with special needs, a child with educational disabilities. She was advocating for her child and ultimately filed what's called a 10-day letter, which is something that gets filed by a parent when they intend to unilaterally place her child in a private school and then ask the board to pay for it. She filed a 10-day notice, but she didn't ask the board to pay for it. Kinnon Board of Education said that the filing of that 10-day notice meant that she could no longer serve on the board. She challenged that. She ultimately was successful and the appellate division said that because she had not actually asked the board to pay for that placement, she had not crossed the line with regard to a conflict that would have disenfranchised her from the board. So she was successful. What that also meant is she would recover her attorney's fees. Board email confidentiality. This is a board member in East Orange, came out of an executive session, decided to send an email to his friends about what was discussed in executive session. He gotten, he gotten a whole lot of trouble for that because he was disclosing confidential information, clearly a violation of the School Ethics Act. But there was something else in here that was important and so I, I pointed up, I pointed out to you, and that is that what the school ethics, he defended this on the basis that he couldn't, that he should not be found to have violated the School Ethics Act because if someone had made an open request for that email, that they could have obtained it under the Open Public Records Act. Open Public Records Act, as you know, says that government records are subject to access by, accessed by the public depending upon their content. Everything that we receive or send in this school district, in or out of the district to one another, is a government record. A government record is any document that's made in the ordinary course of business here in Secaucus. The question is, if somebody wants access to those public record, those government records, what is the content of it? The content determines whether or not they receive it and whether they receive it in a redacted form. And what the School Ethics Commission said is that this email would never have seen the light of day because it was advisory, consultative, and deliberative. It was pre-decisional. It was something that the board was considering, but not something that the board had decided. So that email would not have been subject to access under the Open Public Records Act. You're done with me? Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fogarty.
Thank you.
Also, I just want to add, we attached to the agenda this evening, a guide to the Board of Education meetings in New Jersey and some frequently asked questions. I just wanted to go over a couple of them, ones that seem to continue to come to our attention and seem to be concerns of the community regarding our role as board members. So one of the questions, what is the role of the school board and the superintendent? The school board is charged with representing the concerns of its community, monitoring the educational needs of its students, and creating policies to ensure that its district is well-run. It does not operate the district's day-to-day business, that is the job of the superintendent, the district's salaried chief executive officer. The school board must vote on and pass items regarding policies, goals, objectives, and personnel. It holds the superintendent responsible for implementing and achieving those objectives. Another commonly asked question, if I have a problem, is the school board the appropriate body to address it? The school board should be the quote "court of last resort." Work up the chain of command. For instance, if you have an issue concerning a district employee, first, address it with that person directly. If the matter is not resolved, then take it to their immediate supervisor and follow up the chain of command if you are not satisfied. Another, boards may choose to respond to public comments by seeking additional information or delegating authority to the superintendent or a designee to investigate an issue. While public education can be an emotional issue, the school board should strive to maintain a certain level of decorum at its meeting. Many meetings are recorded, streamlined, streamed online or televised, and students often attend or participate in meetings. As such, all should maintain a tone of respect and civility. Courteous behavior is extremely important during challenging times. My school board seems to rapidly work through its agenda without much debate. Why is that? School boards sometimes have a workshop or caucus meeting where they discuss issues in great detail, but do not vote on those items. Boards may use a committee structure where select members totaling less than a quorum of the board, often working with the superintendent or key administrators, study a specific issue and make recommendations to the full board for a vote. By the time the full board meets for the regular agenda or business session where it votes on issues, agenda items usually have been vetted or studied. So those are just some commonly asked questions that, you know, I think it's important for the public to understand what our role is. This is attached. There are many more topics that, that are discussed, so I suggest you take a look at them. It's attached to the agenda for, it's online, right? Grace, is it online as well?
Not yet. We will put it.
Not yet, okay.
Not yet. We will put it online after tomorrow, after tonight's meeting.
Okay. And there are copies too, for anyone that's here, there are copies when you come in if you want to grab one on the way out. Okay, correspondence. Acting superintendent report.
I waited a little while to discuss something that, that we all experienced over the last couple of weeks here. So yesterday, my day started out, I had a chance to speak with Felicia Maloney, who's been here for 42 years as a teacher. This morning, I, I had a chance to talk to Jim Bonova, popular for Zed Teacher and Coach for many years, worked here around 40 years. And then I thought about how long I've been here. Kindergarten, 1970. I'm 59. College for four years away. One year after that, had nothing to do with Secaucus Schools. Two years coached somewhere else. 52 years I had something to do with Secaucus. That's a long time, you know? But we lost a teacher, Lisa Smith-Bonen, not too long ago. So we talk about time tonight. You put a lot of time into this. And the people that work here put a lot of time into it. And it's precious time. And I ask that you make it efficient time. Thorough and efficient are the two words that have never changed in public education. Never changed. Let's make sure, we always make sure we take care of ourselves with our time because it goes fast. Later on, my good friend over there is going to give, is going to read out some awards. A lot of kids put a lot of time into what they do. And he's going to do a great job.
Thank you, Charlie. Business administrator, board secretary report.
Yes, tonight I have two things. The first, I, good evening, I would like to request approval to amend the scheduled board meeting dates for February, for the year 2025. I'd like to change the February 20th board meeting as the school district will be closed to February 13th. And I would like to change the March 20th board meeting to March 18th as we have to submit our budget to the county on March 19th. So I ask approval for this.
February, February 13th, Grace, did you say?
February 20th to February 13th.
13th is the new date. You're welcome.
And then March 20th to March 18th.
Okay. Thank you. No discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I'd like to take a moment to recognize our board as this is School Board Recognition Month. Whereas school boards create a vision for what students should know and be able to do, whereas school boards establish clear standards for student performance, whereas school boards ensure that student assessments are tied to established standards, whereas school boards are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student achievement, whereas school boards align school district resources to ensure that students meet standards, whereas school boards create a climate that supports the philosophy that all children can learn at high levels, whereas school boards build collaborative relationships based on trust, teamwork, and shared accountability, and whereas school boards are committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement. Now therefore, acting superintendent, Mr. Voorhees, and myself hereby declare our appreciation to the members of the Secaucus School Board and proclaim the month of January to be School Board Recognition Month. We urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members in preparing today's students for tomorrow's world. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Grace and Charlie. Thanks for the pens. Public forum, agenda items? Nothing? Okay. Thank you. Governance Committee, personnel?
This month, we are approving and welcoming an elementary teacher, substitute teachers, per diem bus driver, per diem nurse, and per diem clerk. I would like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt resolutions R 1.01 through R 1.09 and motion M 1.01.
Second.
Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Under policy, Strauss Esme is a company we use to help update our policies and assure we are in compliance. There are numerous policies tonight that we will be updating to make sure we comply with regulations. I would like to make a motion to postpone P 5111, policy P 5701, and policy P 9163. And I'd also like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt resolutions R 2.01.
Second.
Thank you. And thank you for the very productive meeting we had the other day in governance. I went through the manual, the policy manual, and I presented my questions to the board. Some of them include issues with ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act funding. And if I can ask our BA, some questions related to that. Under, under ESSA funding, are we still receiving funds? And under, what titles are we still getting the funds?
Yes, we currently are receiving funds. We receive under Title I, Title II, III, and IV.
Okay. And there's very specific guidelines to when those funds need to be spent. And I assume all that is being worked out so we're not going to lose any of those funding?
That is correct. Our audit does display that we have met all requirements.
Another question. We have the parent and family engagement. It says the district will comply with the requirements as outlined in policy 2415.04, Title I, District-wide Parent and Family Engagement in Policy. Can you, is this still something that's active or we're still working on that as a part of our program?
Yes, we are current with that. Our Director of Curriculum and Education, Ms. Lot, will handle those meetings and she does prepare the agenda and it is taking place.
Thank you very much. That ends my questions.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Education Committee, curriculum?
Hi, good evening all. We had, the Education Committee had its first meeting of the year. I would like to thank you, everybody who participated. Also, I would like to motion to accept the recommendations of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt resolution R 3.01 and R 3.02. This has to do with field trips. We have two high school trips coming up and one field trip for Clarendon and also approval of the curriculum for English 11, British Literature.
Second.
Call the roll?
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Operations Committee, finance?
So this month, we had our committee meeting. We were updated on projects that were ongoing in the district. We had door replacements at Huber Street, were all completed. Promethium boards were installed at Huber Street. Rack system for computer storage was installed. Lighting project is still Lighting project is still ongoing. We're in the process of changing out the old lights and adding LED lights, which is going to be about 90% more efficient. At Clarendon School, Promethean boards were installed. Lighting project ongoing over there. At Millridge, I'm sorry, at middle school and high school, the gym floor. And that's about it. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt Resolution R 4.01 through R 4.08 as described below.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Mr. Bolanino?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Abstain from R 4.02 and R 4.03, and yes for the rest.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes, and everything abstaining on 4.02 and 4.03.
Safety, security, buildings, and grounds?
There was nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Thank you. The Ad-Hoc Committees, we had no meetings this month, but meetings will be on the calendar for February. As far as legislation, those meetings are several times a year. I believe, Grace, you said in the spring? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the Legislation Committee will meet in the spring. And no other meetings. Negotiations, there's nothing. We just recently negotiated the supervisor's contract, and the next negotiation will be the principals. And when is that coming up in 2025? This year? Okay. This year. Okay. Directors as well. Public Forum General? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't even see athletics on here. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Yep.
Yeah, so we had a lot of students receive postseason honors for the fall season. To start off, we could go with football. AJ Concepcion, first team, all-division offense. In Concepcion again, all-state, Group 1, second team. Brandon Vega, first team, all-division defense. Dan Casillas, second team, all-division offense. Marcus Goldsack, second team, all-division offense. Noah Santos, second team, all-division offense. Josh Mascher-Pietro, second team, all-division defense. Joseph Pinto, second team, all-division defense. Aiden Mar, uh, Martirano, honorable mention, all-division. Dylan Spanpulanco, honorable mention, all-division. Moving on to boys soccer. Danny Grudkov, first team, all-division forward. Youssef Abada, first team, all-division midfielder. Jacob Urti, first team, all-division defender. Lucas Rodriguez, second team, all-division midfielder. Noah Turuna, second team, all-division defender. And Paul Young, honorable mention, all-division. Soccer girls, Jasmine Bradley, first team, all-division midfielder. Gabriela Torillo, first team, all-division defender. Eva Lucy, second team, all-division forward. Julia Pozo, second team, all-division forward. Kate Apter, second team, all-division defender. Caitlin Tusa, honorable mention, all-division. Moving on to girls tennis. Anika Antala, first, first-team doubles, all-division. Katerina Sakatos, first-team doubles, all-division. Dia Chandrana, second-team singles, all-division. Jalen Beeston, honorable mention, all-division. Tenzin Chosum, honorable mention, all-division. Moving on to our volleyball team. The girls volleyball team, who won NJIC National Division. They're a co-championship team, Hudson County championship team, and a Section 2 Group 1 championship team. Sophia Guzman, first team, all-division. Sophia Guzman, third team, all-state. And Sophia Guzman, first team, all-state, Group 1. Olivia Jasenek, first team, all-division. Olivia Jasenek, first team, all-state, Group 1. Evelyn Torres, first team, all-division. Evelyn Torres, second team, all-state, Group 1. Sarah Vallow, second team, all-division. Sarah Vallow, third team, all-state, Group 1. Isabella Pablo, second team, all-division. Angelina Fitzgerald, honorable mention, all-division. And for the cross-country boys, Dominic Vargas, first team, all-division. Yandan Sherpa, second team, all-division. Maxwell Donaldson George, second team, all-division. Carolos Awad, second team, all-division. Andre De Los Santos, honorable mention, all-division. And finally, cross-country girls. Ananya Bhajpayee, first team, all-division. Arya Shroff, first team, all-division. Juliana Tango, second team, all-division. Elaine Jang, honorable mention, all-division. And Isabel Umana, honorable mention, all-division. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Now moving on to public forum? Nothing? Okay. Thank you. Board Member Comments?
I'd like to say a quick congratulations to all the athletes. I mean, those are, those are some, especially our own Paul, who made the list, so.
Thank you.
Through the chair. First of all, I want to thank my fellow trustees and president for allowing me to sit up here because I'm getting new hearing aids and hopefully they'll be better. I'll be able to hear every, all the important things I want to say. I asked the president, the BA, and the Acting Superintendent to provide a copy of the Long Range Facilities Plan, and its volume is 10 pages. It was last done in May of 2020. It's due every five years, and our president said that she will be working on developing a committee to review this so we can have an updated one in time. We have about three months left before this one is due. When I met with the, our BA about this, there are several issues in here that they projected, a lot of money was involved in that, and none of those things came through. They were expecting this huge growth in our population and needs for additional buildings or classrooms and stuff. So it's very interesting to see what transpired and what has not, and the monies that were tied into this that we did not need to spend. So I'm looking forward to seeing what we do with our new Long Range Facility Plan. I thank you all for bringing this to, to our attention.
Thank you, Jerry. I just wanted to just, if you can speak on, Grace, what is the protocol for developing the Long-Term Facilities Plan? Is that a committee that is established by the board? Or is that something that gets worked on internally? How, how does that work?
It's, normally it's developed in conjunction with the Buildings and Ground Supervisor and our architect of record.
Okay.
So we have to go out for an architect of record. So that will be the first step in us doing it. The next thing is, we did receive notification from the state of New Jersey yesterday that they are revamping the entire Long Range facility platform. So it's a major undertaking, and more were, more news would be coming out about it. Exactly when? They have not given us specific deadline, you know, timelines. So as of right now, even though it expires in May of '25, there is a possibility, as, which has been in the past, there will probably be an extension on it.
Okay.
Because they're working on that. But we are in the process. This is basically the architect, B and G, myself, that developed the plan along with the superintendent.
Okay. And then it's presented to the board?
That's correct.
To the committee, to Operations and Finance Committee for review? And then it is brought to the entire board?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you for that explanation, Grace. And just in my comments, I would like to say, on behalf of the board, congratulations to all of our athletes, especially, as Lance said, our very own Paul down there at the end. Huge accomplishments by the district athletically. And also, would like to congratulate Susan Red Van Lee on her retirement. On behalf of the board, we wish you well. On a personal note, she taught all three of my children, so she will be missed by the Diadetta family, and we wish her well. Thank you. Anybody else?
I just, I also want to congratulate the athletes and thank the coaches for putting all their time in to make our athletes who they are.
Yes, absolutely. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.